Chicken and fish, don't cut it.
Yeah.
That's a compliment, Mr. Yeah.
A little bit, right?
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July the 5th, 2022. It is approximately 5:30 PM. And this is Laredo College District Finance and Audit Committee meeting. I call this meeting to order. Now proceed with roll call. Esteban Angel, absent, Tita Bella, Mercurio Martinez, and Jorge Delgado, present. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the May 2022 Financial Report. Mr. Sessarella.
Good afternoon, members of the board. For the record, Sessarella VP of Finance. Included with your board package, you receive the copy of the May 2022 Financial Report. I'll go ahead and start the update by going over the general operating revenues. As of May 31st, we have revenues of $60 million, 15,205. That's 97% of our budgeted revenues. We are projecting that we will end the year with total revenues of $63,558,440. The increase for the revenue is attributed to an additional $2 million that will be coming from the HER funding for lost revenue or that for the tuition waiver that was offered for fall and spring of this year. We are currently pending to record or charge to grant $4.8 million for in-district tuition for fall and spring. And then we're also pending to charge to grant $745,000 for out-of-district tuition, as well as $449,000 for continuing net tuition. So again, based on the additional revenue that we are collecting through the HER funding, we are projecting that our total revenue for the year will be $63,558,000. Now, out of the revenue line items, we are currently pending to submit a payment for the general, from the general use fees, and this is the revenue bonds. So we have a payment that will be going out at the end of July for $4.1 million, and another one for $2.8 million for the maintenance tax notes. But again, once those payments are taken into account and we recognize the revenue that is pending for the last three months of operations, we are projecting again that the revenue for the end of the year will be $63.5 million. Any questions on the revenue line items? The expenditures, as of May 31st, we have $40,983,276. That represents 66.42% of our projected expenditures or budgeted expenditures. At this point last year, our expenditures were at $38,497,000 or 65.63% of our budget. Again, at this point, we are within our range. We don't have any major variances to report. We are projecting that we will have savings at the end of the fiscal year. As we mentioned at the last board meeting, we're projecting that we'll have around $4.5 million in savings for the fiscal year. As far as the other funds for the EDC or the special appropriation, for the year, we have revenues of $369,482. That represents, actually, it's 179% of what we had budgeted. And the reason for this, again, has to do with the Laredo Cares Act 2.0. These are the courses that were offered through the EDC. So we are recognizing that revenue that was done through the Economic Development Center. The expenditures for the year are $141,955. So at this point, we're looking at a net change to the fund balance of $227,527. On the auxiliary services, and this includes the student services, bookstore, cafeteria operations, and housing, our revenue for the year is at $1,454,905. 110.5% of our budgeted revenue. Expenses are at $565,148 or 42.9%. So we're looking at a net change to fund balance of $889,757 as of May 31st. For restricted funds, we are looking at revenues of $32,993,578. Expenditures of $32,993,578. The bulk of the revenues and expenditures are from federal grants, from Title IV grants, which is our Pell Grants. We have processed approximately $15,216,553. And then from the HER funding for the year, we have $12,731,836. So 27, roughly, or a little bit over 27 million is coming from those two particular grants. When it pertains to the HER funding, we currently have a balance of $8.5 million left from the $53.2 million that were received. Out of the $8.5 million, like I mentioned, we are pending to recognize the tuition waivers for fall and spring semester and that total $4.8 million. And that is for in-district tuition. For out-of-district tuition, we were looking at $744,000. And for the continuing net, we were looking at $449,000. So once those items are recognized, we are looking at about $2.2 million dollar available balance that will be available for this coming fiscal year. For the Facilities Master Plan, for the year, we began the year at $21,968,255. We have a recognized revenue through May 31st of $102,901. The expenditures for this fiscal year totaled $2,502,020 for a net decrease to the Facilities Master Plan Phase III of $2,399,119. As of May 31st, the balance stands at $19,569,136. As we reported at the Construction Committee meeting, all of those $19.5 million have already been allocated to projects that are currently in progress or in the process of being, the plans are being developed by the architects. We do have a project also that is identified as part of the Facilities Master Plan Phase III that is included as part of the agenda item, and that is to upgrade the audiovisual equipment at the south campus. And again, this item was presented at the Construction Committee meeting. And so we're looking at about $567,000 for audiovisual equipment. We're looking to upgrade the equipment for 45 classrooms at the south campus. Tax collections, as of May 31st, stand at $38,510,525. That represents 96.31% of our tax levy, tax levy of $39,987,719. We have three months left in the fiscal year. So roughly, we collect about another 3.2% out of the tax levy. So we are projecting that we will be collecting approximately about $1.1 million in the next three months. Again, we budgeted a 99% collection rate. Last year, we collected actually 101%. And back in 2020, 99.35%. So we feel that we will be hitting that mark for this fiscal year. The next item is just an update on the operating fund balance. We again began the fiscal year with a negative fund balance of $2,545,000. Revenues for the year stand at $60 million, expenditures of $40.9 million. We do have a transfer out of $2.4 million, and this is to address the deferred maintenance projects. So the net change through May 31st stands at an increase to the fund balance of $16,621,075. We are projecting again that we will have savings at the end of the fiscal year of approximately $4.5 to $5 million. So we are already, we do have a couple of commitments for the next fiscal year that includes the $1.3 million that was approved by the board for equipment. We also have an item on the agenda for tomorrow. This is to address the HVAC upgrade and repairs to the Martinez Fine Arts Center. One of the recommendations that is being made is to use savings to fully fund the project. So again, that is an item that will be considered tomorrow, presented to the board for consideration. So again, when we look at the net change, we look at right now a balance of $14,75,331. Again, we do have the three months of operations, so we still have some expenditures that will be hitting the fund balance to complete the year. The last item is the monthly investment report as of April 30th, 2022. We had bank deposits of $97,792,22. We have investment pools of $18,792,22 for total investments and deposits of $160,584,44. We are currently looking at the rates. One of the options that we have is to go and secure Treasury Bonds, US Treasury Bonds. They are paying a little bit higher interest rates. They are backed by the federal government, so they are a safe investment option for the college. So we are working with a company that will be sending us more information to see if that's a viable investment option. And the investment that we would be looking at would be at the Endowment Fund to try to increase the returns so that we can accumulate more interest to offer more scholarships.
Mr. Bella, is that going through our financial advisor or that's going through somebody separate?
No, this is somebody separate. Our financial advisor doesn't do the investment component. And that concludes the update on the financial report. Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four. Approval to purchase annual maintenance for nursing and simulators, SimMan and SimMom mannequins. Mr. Sessarella?
Yes, members of the board, this item is to request approval from the board to purchase the extended warranty and preventive maintenance packages for 10 nursing and simulators, two SimMan simulators, and one SimMom simulator. The total cost is $83,070. It is being purchased from Laredo using Texas Buy Board Contract Number 610-20. This equipment, when it was originally purchased, included two years of warranty. So now that warranty has expired, so now we're asking that the board approve the purchase of the extended warranty for an additional 12 months. And again, this item is budgeted under the equipment maintenance line item for the nursing program. Yes, it is an item that is recommended. These pieces of equipment are expensive. There is one item here for approval and is for an additional SimMom simulator, and the cost of that equipment is roughly a little bit over $35,000.
Is there any additional terms as far as months are concerned for this type of warranty? Or is they go on an annual?
Once they're used, it's only on an annual basis, yes. When it is originally purchased, they go up to 24 months.
Thank you.
Okay, Laredo has told us that they have never had a school to keep them as long as we have. And you know, the usage we have is very high. We have one that is 11 years old and another that's 10 years old. And so keeping this maintenance agreement and them coming and doing it really makes a difference. Plus having our team that is taking really excellent care. Oh, they are. They're wonderful. And the SimMom is also really, I know I had one person tell me that scared him to death and he'll never want to have kids, but otherwise, I think it's really neat and so. Any other questions?
So this maintenance agreement is for items that are 10 and 11 years old?
They won't, they won't actually do the maintenance for anything over 10 years?
No, no, no. The SimMoms that you have, they're 10 years old?
We have one that's 10 years old, and the other is, this one is the one that's still within their.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Bella. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five. Approval to amend baseball and softball field lease agreement. Mr. Sessarella?
Yes, members of the board, this change is just to recognize a new entity. Originally, when the board approved the lease with Laredo Orange Crush, they were in the process of, they had submitted an application to the IRS to set up a new entity. And this was based on the request of the City of Laredo. They are working with the city to secure an agreement to use their fields. So when they came to the board to request that we lease the fields to them, they had not received the paperwork yet from the IRS, even though they actually did get approved on March 21st, 2022. As far as the terms to the agreement, everything will remain the same. It's just to recognize a new entity. So the new entity will now go from Laredo Orange Crush to Laredo Baseball Softball Select. And again, they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Now, this agreement runs through the end of October. To be exact, I believe it is October. Let me see, it was a six month, yes, it'll end October 28th, 2022. Again, as far as the other terms, they will remain the same.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Update on fixed asset inventory software. Mr. Sessarella?
Yes, board members, this item is to address an audit recommendation or an audit finding. During this last audit, it was recommended that we look at inventory software. Right now, our property inventory department, Ms. Maniola, the manager of that area, along with Mr. Chavez, and the IT office have been looking at several options. So far, they've looked at three different softwares. We are currently reviewing the proposals. The softwares that we're looking at offer the ability to keep inventory using a scanning system and also have the ability to be able to export the information and import it into our banner system. Two of the softwares that we're looking at have the capability of doing depreciation as well as having a check-in and checkout for equipment. Currently, right now, we have a manual process when we check out equipment. Employees check out equipment. They sign a form that is then kept by the department and property inventory. With this software, we would be able to do that electronically, and we would be able to track that electronically. So again, right now, the companies that we're looking at is, one of them is Sage. The other one is AssetWorks, and the other one was SC Logic. Company that we're looking at recommending at this point is Sage. It comes with an initial cost for year one, and this would include the equipment, the implementation costs, as well as the licenses for the software of $45,510. And then we would have annual cost of $19,544 for years two and three. Again, this particular software has the capability of doing depreciation and also exporting and importing the information to Banner, as well as having that check-in, check-out of the equipment to be done electronically. AssetWork has a cost, initial cost of $56,264 for year one. And again, it includes the equipment as well as the maintenance and the license fees for the software. And then for years two, it would be $18,481. Year three, $19,405. And year four, $20,375. So they are calling for a four-year agreement. So the total cost for this particular software would be $114,525 compared to the Sage software, which would be $84,598. Again, that is for Sage would be a three-year agreement. And then SC Logic has an annual initial cost for year one of $20,399.76. However, this software does not include the depreciation component. And then years two would be $6,876 as well as year three for a total cost of $31,152. Again, right now, we are looking at finalizing the details to make a recommendation to the board. But again, right now, the software that we're leaning towards is the Sage one, which includes all the items that we requested. Any questions?
None heard. Thank you, Mr. Bella. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. Update on building lease with the United States International Boundary and Water Commission. Mr. Sessarella?
Yes, board members, this is just for an update on a building lease agreement that we currently have with the United States International Boundary and Water Commission. This lease was originally approved back in 1997. It was a 25-year lease for use of one of our facilities here on the Fort McIntosh campus. And that would be building P-27? P-27? Yes, sir.
P-27.
P-27. Again, we have offered. It is actually located on the north side of campus, just across where the library is on the other side, on Innsford Road, I believe it's called. It's between the payroll office and where the new DPS building will be. Yes, so right now, we have, as we work through the details of the new agreement, we have extended a 60-day extension on the current agreement. So the extension will run through the end of August. We have already submitted to the Water Commission a draft of the new terms and conditions that are currently being reviewed by their legal. And again, we are also looking at a particular piece of property that apparently is owned by IBWC that here on campus, something that came about when we looked at the lease. So we're looking, we did pull out the deed for that property, and we're looking at right now doing a survey and mapping out that location to see exactly what it is. According to the IBWC, it's, it has to do with the parking lots that are in front of that building. So we're looking at that and again, finalizing some of the terms and of the agreement to bring forward to the board in August for consideration.
Chair recognizes Mercurio Martinez.
Thank you. The International Boundary and Water Commission, is that specifically an office?
Yes, sir.
It is an office.
It is their office here locally.
The local office?
Yes, the local office.
Okay, thank you. Some years back, yes, they did. And also, at one time during the period of, I tell you because I became very knowledgeable, that was during the time that International Boundary Commission was working on the condemning the land that was going to have the construction of the Papan Dam. And it had strong activity here at Fort McIntosh, quite a number of buildings in addition to a considerable number of vehicles that were used by personnel with the International Boundary Commission. I'll tell you because my father was very much involved, and I was, ended up actually being his driver, so to speak, during that period of time that he was visiting the individual families that were going to have their properties condemned, but due to the, due to the dam. I. I.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was on.
Yes, right. That's correct.
Mr. Vela, the IWBC, anything you'd like to reference to our students here?
Currently, they're not, Mr. Vela, but in our discussions with them, they said that they would be willing to explore memorandum of understanding so that we could have students visit with them and go over what they actually do here locally and at Falcon.
Because I'm under the impression that they're paying a subsidy rate as far as rent is concerned.
Again, right now, the current agreement is that there is a swap of, again, they're using building P twenty-seven and we're using a portion of land that is needed to them, which are the parking lot areas. At least that's what the understanding is. We're still mapping the area to make sure that that is exactly what we're leasing from them. As far as us charging, we are charging for the electricity that they're consuming currently at that building. But again, yes, they're not paying any rent right now as part of this agreement, but there is that stipulation that we are not paying rent on the piece of property that they have.
Chair recognizes President Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you for the record, Minita Ramirez, President. So a couple of things on this contract that we found was, it will be a limited contract. It won't be for twenty-five years. It will be for a maximum of three, three to five years, I think is what we were working with. Also, the idea of getting students to be able to do internships in their offices is one of the things that we were going to try to get. So moving forward, all of these agreements that we have for property on our campus, we want to see how we incorporate student learning opportunities from these entities. And just having them on campus with no connection to the college really doesn't help our students and/or our research or any of the programs that we have in place. And so ideally, we want to extend that. The sixty-day extension was the best solution we came up with with Mr. Mira to try to get the contract negotiated with them so that we would charge rent, they would pay their own utilities and maintenance, and at the same time, start to set a different standard for the utilization of our campus by external entities.
Excellent. Really, that's an excellent suggestion.
Mr. Vela, when will there be, I guess, a final update on this? Obviously, within the next sixty days?
Yes, sir. So by August, the August meeting, we should be bringing forward a recommendation.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, which is the ratification of Microsoft License Annual Renewal. Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening, members of the Finance and Audit Committee. Albert Chavez, Senior Director of Information Technology. This particular item is for the ratification for the Microsoft Annual License Renewal. I just noticed that there was a mistake on the actual agenda item. The term for the renewal is July first, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, which is what's noted on the quote following the agenda and the item. This particular item covers all of our Microsoft licensing, the Office three sixty-five email system that we have, the Microsoft Windows operating system and Microsoft Visio that we have through this agreement. This particular agreement was renewed through the reseller SHI, which is Software House International, and it was done using a Texas DIR contract, DIR TSO dash four zero nine two.
What are the dates? Can you repeat that?
The dates on the quote is July first, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
This comes up every year, doesn't it?
Yes, that's correct. And on the quote that was provided, the dates are correct. It was just an agenda item submission. I made a mistake on the dates. Apologies.
Understood. Any questions from members of the committee?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number nine, approval of SoftDocs Enterprise Content Management System. Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening. For this particular item, is requesting approval to purchase the SoftDocs Enterprise Content Management System. This particular system will be used by office departments to store organized and access documents from an electronic repository. So basically, this will allow offices to turn paper documents into electronic. And also, the system has an electronic forms component. So a lot of the paper forms that we currently use will be turned into electronic forms. It could be submitted electronically without somebody having to fill out and print it out those documents. For our initial deployment for the system, the offices that are going to start with the system is our Office of Human Resources and the Office of Admissions and Registration. After those two offices, we will be putting together this of other departments that we will begin transitioning.
Very good.
Chair recognizes President Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, sir. This is imperative. Committee members, we really need to minimize the number of manual paper pushing that happens around campus. And this is one of those steps moving forward to try to get people to electronically sign documents to speed up processes on campus. And so the sooner we can get this implemented campus-wide, the better. So we really appreciate your support on this.
I love it.
No problem.
The total cost for this project is a hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight to twenty-nine cents. And that's the cost for year one for the software subscription and for the implementation. And this particular item is going to be procured using the reseller Carisoft, using a cooperative agreement, ENI, number E I zero zero six three dash two zero two one M A.
Very good. Thank you.
What about year two and so on and so forth?
The cost for year two?
Yeah.
It's also on the quote that was included, the second and third year, second year is eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand?
Eighty-four thousand four hundred and forty-one. Year three is eighty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-six. They do have a ladder where they have a, I don't remember the exact percentage, but I believe it's between eight to ten percent increase on a yearly basis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is great news. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number ten, approval of computer equipment PCs purchase. Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening. For this particular request, we're requesting approval to purchase computers that will be installed in the academic computer labs. The total cost for this item is three hundred and nine thousand four ninety-one with twenty cents. This will be a purchase through Dell Computers using the IR contract TSO dash three seven six three. And it's a total of three hundred and twenty Optiplex three thousand small form factor computers and three hundred and twenty Dell twenty-four inch monitors. And that'll be installed in the academic labs at the main and the south campus, where we have computers that are older than four years old.
Yeah.
Any questions from members of the committee?
No.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chavez. We'll move on to agenda item number eleven, approval of Dell hardware maintenance renewal for data center equipment. Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening, members of the board. For this particular item, we're requesting the approval of a one-year hardware maintenance and support renewal for existing servers in the data center. The renewal for the warranty, the total is a hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven with thirty-four cents. The reseller for this particular purchase is Weber Technologies and it's under DIR contract EMC DIR dash TSO dash four two nine nine. On the proposal, there is a listing of the equipment. And if it's, I should have included a PDF version that you can zoom in. Because right now, the one you have on paper is difficult to see. But it's a combination of multiple systems that we have in the data center that we're extending hardware for, hardware and software, hardware and support for an additional year.
Wonderful.
And the term for this agreement, again, is July twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chavez. We'll move on to agenda item number twelve, approval of budgeted cash matching funds for the BEAT Foundation. Miss Salapompa.
Good evening, members of the Finance and Audit Committee. For the record, Salisa Pompa, Director of Donor Relations and Social Projects. The item today is to request your consideration on approval for a scholarship match as requested by the donor. In this case, it would be the BEAT Foundation. The BEAT Foundation has donated fifteen thousand dollars to Laredo College and these are to benefit the Child Development Department, the students that are enrolled in the program. The idea is to support ten students with a thousand dollars each and they're requesting a fifteen thousand dollar match by Laredo College for a total of thirty thousand dollars, which would be awarded in scholarships over the next three years. The scholarship match is available for our restricted scholarship account, which is a non-GO fund. And so that would be the consideration for this particular agenda item.
Very nice. Any questions from members of the committee? Thank you, Ms. Pompa.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number thirteen, approval of two thousand and twenty-two IME Beca Scholarship, regular scholarship matching funds as per donor request. Miss Salapompa.
Thank you. So for this particular request, we are looking at funding that is scholarship match that is requested by the government of New Mexico through the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and in particular with the Mexican consulate in Laredo. We have been awarded seven thousand dollars in scholarship for our students who are Mexican nationals or students born to Mexican nationals and they're requesting a seven thousand dollar match for a total of fourteen thousand dollars to be available. In addition, I have been advised that there is a third-party funder for this who is going to provide us an additional ten thousand dollars per year for the next five years. So this year, we would have a total of twenty-four thousand dollars to award to our students who are Mexican nationals or Mexican descent. These funds should be awarded dispersed no later than October the twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. So that is the request for this particular item.
Very nice. That's awesome. So we have ten thousand dollars for this particular one for the next five years?
Correct. An additional ten. So we have whatever Mexican consulate will do this and it's supplemented by, the supplement is through the Instituto Cultural de México en Laredo through the generosity of Licenciado Eduardo Garcia.
The generosity of whom, please?
Licenciado Eduardo Garcia.
Like it.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, Chair recognizes President Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, sir. So do we have to match the ten thousand as well?
No.
Just the seven thousand?
And how many students are benefiting from these scholarships?
We, we're looking at twenty-four students at a thousand dollars each.
Very good.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number fifteen, approval to purchase.
I'm sorry, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Number fourteen, sorry, my numbers are off. Approval of Star's regular scholarship matching funds as per donor request. Miss Salapompa.
Thank you. So this is the final agenda item for consideration. We have, we will receive up to ten thousand dollars from the Star's scholarship fund. Star's scholarship provides support to students along the South Texas border from Brownsville all the, from El Paso, open one, all the way to Brownsville. Depending on the number of qualifying students, that will be the amount that we get. We can get up to ten thousand dollars. So they're requesting a ten thousand dollar match. And this will also be awarded for the fall twenty-two, spring twenty-three semester.
Awesome. Three great items.
So we do have the funds. We do have the matching funds.
We do have the matching funds, yes, through their restricted scholarship account, which are non-GO.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And the fourteen is supposed to be there too.
Thank you, Ms. Pompa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to agenda item number fifteen, approval to purchase SIMMOM for incoming STEM students participating in undergraduate research as part of the LEAP project. Mr. Sessarella.
Yes, board members of the board, this item is to request the approval to purchase a SIMMOM mannequin for the EMS program. The purchase is being made from Laredo using Texas Buy Board Contract number six ten dash twenty. The total cost of the equipment will be forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Funding is coming from the Title III LEAP's grant. The equipment will be used by students to conduct submerged patient simulation of psychiatric medical and traumatic emergencies within an ambulance setting.
We have to hold.
Yeah. Especially from an EMS side.
Yeah.
Any questions from members of the committee?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number sixteen, order calling for the election for Board of Trustees Places One, Two, and Three as per Board policy B V V legal. Board members' elections, the Texas Election Code and the Texas Education Code and authorizing the college president to enter into a joint election services contract with the Webb County Elections Administrator to conduct and supervise the joint elections of November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Dr. Veronica Martinez.
While they're getting ready, if I may.
Yes. Chair recognizes Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, sir. At this point, I'd like to thank publicly Dr. Veronica Martinez for taking on the responsibility of overseeing our elections from now on. And so it wasn't part of her original charge, but she's graciously agreed to do it. And so we're very grateful to her. Thank you, Dr. Martinez.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Veronica Martinez, serving in the capacity of Elections Officer. I just wanted to provide some information, critical information on the upcoming elections. So the, we've already met with the Webb County Elections Administrator and finalized the dates for the upcoming election. The first day that we had to meet was the deadline to post the notice and that has already been done on June twenty-third. The notices are already posted at the Webb County Center and also on our website. We have an elections website and it's already posted there. The first day to file for a place on the ballot will be July twenty-fifth. The last day to file will be Monday, August twenty-second by five P M.
August twenty-second?
August twenty-second, which is a Monday, by five P M. We already have the packets ready in our office and we're already geared up for the dissemination of the packets.
You want to share this slide with the board, please?
No, no, I don't. I thought it was in your pockets, but I will make sure to share it.
There is one more detail.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
The first day of early voting will be October twenty-fourth. And we will have the mobile unit available here at the main campus and as well as the south campus.
October twenty-fourth?
October twenty-fourth.
Early voting.
Early voting begins. And then that week, from October twenty-four to October twenty-eight, the mobile unit will be here at the case and set in our, on our campus.
Okay.
The following week, the mobile unit will be at the south campus. And that will be from October thirty-first to November the fourth.
To November the fourth?
Yes. And that will also be the last day of early voting, November the fourth.
Okay.
And the general election is November. The general election will be on Tuesday, November the eighth.
Tuesday?
November the eighth.
November eighth.
Is the date of the general election. I'll make sure you get these now, these now, slides. And then the cost of the election, currently in your packets, I believe you have the resolution and the notice from the Webb County Elections Office on the cost.
So the numbers that were provided to us, the, uh, the election operations cost will be thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine and eighty-four cents. The cost for the early voting personnel will be twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-one cents. The election day personnel will be fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. The FICA taxes, which are part of the cost as well, are two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. And the county administrative fee will be seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars and thirty cents. For a total of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Compared to the twenty-twenty elections, it's just a little bit higher than, than that. So it, it increased by about a thousand dollars. For twenty-twenty, the cost was eighty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. So it's just a little bit higher. And the schedule of payments that we need to meet, so by August twenty-six, we need to pay sixty-five thousand, a hundred and forty dollars and twenty-four cents. And the balance of sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seven cents is due by December the first of twenty twenty-two. Now, in, in your packets, you do have the resolution and you also have, um, four ex- for exhibits that need to be signed and approved. Exhibit B is entering into, uh, the joint elections.
Yeah.
And Exhibit C is, uh, the use of the voting system that they're using now.
Right.
Which is different than from the twenty-twenty election. Exhibit D is the election day personnel cost and Exhibit E is the central counting station personnel cost.
Question, uh, I know it's, uh, may not be present on here, we may not have runoff elections, but in the event of a runoff election, what is the cost of the college for that election?
That has not been provided to us yet. They, they did, uh, indicate when we met with them that they would, uh, provide us additional information on the runoff, but as of today, we don't have that information. But that would be an additional cost.
Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Vela.
If I may, uh, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance for the Record. Uh, the last time we had a runoff, uh, it was around, uh, including the general election was about a hundred and thirty thousand that we wound up paying. So it's an additional, maybe another fifty, forty to fifty thousand for the runoff.
I, I know it's been, just to make this quick, I know it's been mentioned before, I think I brought it up when I first got on here, and I know several other members, uh, have tried to, to change this, but, uh, I actually asked members of this committee and the administration to consider options to either do away with the runoff so that that can be significant savings for the institution. Uh, but other ways in which we can save money to where we're not spending so much money on elections itself. On, with that being said, uh, Chair recognizes, uh, resting here, legal counsel.
Yes, Chairman, one comment is, is the, the price that the Webb County Elections Administrator may charge for runoff, I think would also depend in part on how many elections are going to be held in the runoff. If, if there's multiple runoffs, the price may come down. If it's only Laredo College, say, for example, one trustee that's in a runoff election, that, that may push up the, the cost. So there may be difficult for them to give a exact figure now.
Okay.
To Chairman.
Chair recognizes, uh, Judge Maria.
Let me review it again, uh, if I may, uh, the first day of, uh, for a candidate to register, uh, as a candidate is the twenty-fifth of July.
Uh-huh, correct.
And it will end on the twenty-second of August.
At five.
At five P M.
Uh, and, uh, the early voting will start on the twenty-fourth of October.
Until, until November.
And ended on, uh, November the fourth.
And on the thirty-first of November.
It, it will end, early voting will end on November the fourth.
November the fir-.
The fourth.
Uh, the fourth, okay, the fourth, thank you.
Two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Should be more.
And the general.
Election day on the eighth of, of, uh.
On November.
Of November, which is on the Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And additional.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Martinez. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number seventeen, approval of Laredo College Campus Police Equipment, Possible Close Section Discussion as permitted by Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-six. Dr. David Arizola.
Members of the board, uh, David Arizola, Vice President of Compliance and Risk here at Laredo College. Um, just want to provide everybody just a, a couple of, a, a quick timeline as to how we got here. Um, on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, um, the Robb Elementary School shootings in Oliva, Texas sparked, uh, uh, an outrage in the country and certainly, um, a, a sharp look at law enforcement. On June first, twenty twenty-two, we, we came before the board and we asked for additional equipment. At that time, uh, the board, um, thankfully, um, asked us to go back, uh, take another hard look at what we're requesting and see if there's anything else that we needed. Um, and, and assess what, what we had already, right? Uh, we, we also had a, a meeting with, or were involved in a meeting with Representative Raymond and Judas Saffarini. Uh, it was a meeting hosted here at Laredo College. At that time, we, myself, Chief Castro, we sat in the room and, and had the long conversation with other law enforcement, uh, entities and, and we came to the conclusion that, uh, you know, we had some opportunities for improvement, not just internally, but, you know, law enforcement, you know, I had to get some better communication, more training, training and, uh, definitely more equipment. So what we're asking, uh, the board to do today and tomorrow is, is sort of a, a blind request, right? So what we would don't want to really share too many, too much of the details in, in the public of what we're asking for because, uh, we don't want, um, this to just get into anybody's head.
Or compromise security.
Right. So a- at the time, when we made the request in June, uh, we had already requested a communication system a- and some tactical equipment, the weapons and, and personal protection equipment for your officers. Um, we went back and we, we, we took a look at what we had requested, see what, uh, you know, how, how we could improve. And, uh, we're making some additional requests, uh, uh, to a hundred and eighty-five thousand and seventy-one dollars, right? So again, um, this is not a, a request I, I'm making. I have the chief, Mr. Javier Canos, who's, uh, back there as well. Uh, really take a look at, you know, what was out there. What was the best thing that we could get that would, uh, not only protect our officers, but also the employees and students of Laredo College? And I, I don't know, Chief, if you want to add to that?
Good evening, members of the board, uh, Finance and Audit Committee, Jaime Castro, interim chief of police for Laredo College. Um, what you have here before you is a lot of days, a lot of putting together of numbers, talking to different people from the city, from the county, from the government. And so we came across, uh, some issues that we desperately need here. One is the enhancement of communication. We do not have communication with the city of Laredo. We do not have communication with the government. The only communication we have right now is within ourselves and the Webb County Sheriff's Department. This is something that should have been done many, many years ago. Uh, and so it is costly, but it's something that we desperately need. We need to have the communication with the city of Laredo, Police Department, Fire Department, Utilities Department, U S Border Patrol, D P S. And also we have the possibility of maybe speaking with the I S Ds. But we don't have this. Um, the, the.
Mr. Chair, if I may, would, may we go into executive session to discuss this, please?
Yes, definitely.
Yes. I can have a motion to go into executive session?
I'm motion.
All those in favor? All right, we will convene for executive session. Thank you. A second? Judge?
I second that.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.